Union County Education Association. Union County. Number two, School Board Attorney of Bay. Mary Ann Stackhouse. Okay. Number three, Special Recognition for Announcements.
So, did you turn that speaker that way?
Well, we were trying to turn it that way so they could hear. They're having trouble hearing.
We can't hear. Maybe halfway.
Okay, is that better? Okay, I'll try to lean toward the microphone. I don't really have any necessarily special recognition announcements per se, but I do want to update the board after the closure of the school system for the period of time that we have closed. And I took notes so that I make sure I didn't give anything out, but there's a lot of information. Let you know that we closed due to the number of staff and drivers due to positive or negative 14 due to close contact. We were only able to fill 80% of our staff absences this sub today prior to closing. We were at our limit with bus drivers, which would have put us in a position of having to cancel bus routes if we had another bus driver that was passed. I chose to use our implement weather days without virtual learning due to the fact that we cannot support the entire district virtually and students would not ever receive the support required from us. In the end, teachers would have done a lot of work into distance learning, but would have had to come back to school teaching where they left off before we closed.
That's good.
In total, we have 13 implement weather days. We designated three for professional development and 10 for what you post snow days. We used a total of six days during this closure. Tuesday was a maybe day on our school calendar and then professional development was down remotely. We were asking, we are asking the board tonight to amend the calendar to those who made April 18th as an instructional day rather than professional development day. I plan to submit a waiver to the state that we are forced to use more than our local days with the weather. So, in all actuality during this time, we ended up using five of our implement weather days and so we will still have five remaining of those days. So, not necessarily any student or teacher needing virtual learning. Also, just as an update, we had, before we closed, we'd already closed both of our CDC classrooms at high school here and at Habley Church due to positive faces, evil, public contacts. So, also during the closure, I'm in the central office staff and principals for planning purposes to move forward. The results for that meeting is a quality. Sorry. We need to provide existing staff, existing staff that we have, provide assistance to our nurses in the school to help inform parents and complete line lists now they're around the house. We went whole process of evaluating our calendars and see exactly these days we would have remaining. We wanted to follow the governor's suggestion to recommend but not require mask wearing, only close schools maybe for those most effective by the shortages in staff that used the staff that stuff to supplement other schools. If we do have to close one school down rather than closing the entire district, we're a con, anticipating closing the entire district again. I did a survey of our parents by the school to gauge their thoughts on wearing a mask when they're returning to the school so our principals would have an understanding for the feelings in the community which they suffered. The results of the schools voting yes to their child wearing a mask, and once again, I wasn't doing this as we're going to do something with masks. I felt like principals might want to know the gauge potential of their own communities because our communities, community to community, it's different. Not that we're necessarily, I was just going to share this out to the principals so they would have that information that I felt. So, then we were transparent, I would give you those numbers. Big Ridge responded 53% yes, Lycel was 63% yes, Manuel was 65% yes, Hall A was 65% yes, Shurpa Chapel was 73% yes, the middle school was 60% yes, and the high school was 62% yes. Not that we plan to do anything with that information, I thought it might be some good information for the principals at each school if we're saying, you know, we want to go with the guidelines of the governor or strengthen mask. But the principals had reported to me in the meeting is that some of the students that would have otherwise worn masks, they get to a point of wearing masks because the majority of students in the schools were not wearing masks. So, that's why I wanted to let them know that they both need to keep their mask and that felt like that that's all that matters.
And would you clarify one more time, that poll went out to staff only or staff and students?
No, to parents only.
Parents only.
Right.
Thank you.
How many people old?
It was around 50% of those schools. It wasn't, we didn't get a good sampling of the numbers, a representation of what was at each of the schools. Because it leaves our school messenger system and it doesn't repeat call back if somebody doesn't answer it. Sometimes leaves a message, it's not programmed to continue calling until they get a response.
So, 50% response rate?
I would say approximately 50% response rate. Also ask the local health department if they could provide or no vaccination clinics for parents, for parents and babies. They are no longer allowed to provide or no clinics. I've shared, there are office hours during our closures, so that interested parents should know that this is somewhat similar to what we do for our staff during flu season. The health department comes out and lets a vaccination, flu vaccination for our staff during winter months outside of COVID time. I will say tonight, we have some parents wishing to speak to the board. Our board policy requires that we receive one week's notice charges immediately to see, along with Mr. Cuffing, I'm waiting with notice and letters that the board be allowed to hear your concern. Finally, I did want to say this. I have spent 49 of my 59 years in Union County public schools. And of that 49 years, I am both a student, teacher, principal, supervisor, director of school. And I hope during that time that I have earned a certain amount of trust from parents and students, which I have dealt with and continue to see day in and day out. It is, for that purpose, I want you all to know that I'm willing to listen to parents and I've had many parents call me on wearing a mask, not wearing a mask, vaccine, vaccinations, everyone's connected, from everybody should be in a mask, so nobody should be allowed to wear a mask. The school system is in a place where they have to make decisions based on what is the best interest of their students. And I feel like that's what we've done. But at the same time, adhering to what our community is asking for. So, just like in those responses, there's not a clear-cut, one-size-all solution to this. But what it does is this is the school system in a particularly bad place of trying to balance those two things. So, our teachers do a wonderful job, I think, teaching every, all of our staff care continuously about our students. And all we want is to be back in school teaching any way that that's possible. So, I, there's not been a mask mandate suggested to board, that hasn't been questioned. And I don't know, given the governor's orders, that we would even anticipate doing that. I think we have an obligation to work inside of what our, our community members would like to see. I feel like that's where we are right now. I didn't mean to give the impression that I was out pushing the vaccine, I certainly was not. I just wanted to make sure that the opportunity was there for parents during our closure that didn't know, because I didn't know, that the health department was doing that for hours of things. So, I'm just, I was just trying to get the word out to people because we work closely with the board. So, I just wanted to say those few words because I think that's a concern tonight. And there was nothing put on the agenda or no intention that anything would take place on the board agenda where he talks about reopening. That was not intentional, talking about how we're going to move forward after we come back from this closure. And that was the things that I laid out to you during this. So, just wanted to run that through, thank you all. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Discuss food drinks.
Hello.
Discuss contracts, busy man.
Ladies and gentlemen, how are all doing? We have two contracts to speak about tonight. The first one is the scenario learning contract that's doing business with vector solutions. That is a one-year contract and is for online professional development software that they use to track professional development with our teachers. That contract is approximately, the price is $4,800, which is the same as last year's contract. The second contract we have is for spin toss and this is the same contract that you all saw last night. However, we discovered that the copy that you all had stating that it was for five years, but it's actually for three. So, we just wanted to clarify that and bring it back to you to let you know that this is a three-year contract, there's no changes on it except for the number of years. We just didn't want to misrepresent the number of years that you were voting on. Any questions on either of those contracts? Okay, all right. You have in your packet the medical reports, the director's report, and the office's report. On the director's report, all the spending is currently within proper parameters for this time of year, there's nothing out of the ordinary to report. All of our fund balances are healthy in the office's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Anyone have any questions about the report? If not, we'll move on, thank you. This month, we have seven pages of budget amendments. First two pages of general purpose school. On top of page one are just a request to transfer money within the appropriated budget to needed ones, and then also to add the communication line on the community service page. On the bottom of page one is the literacy training staffing and this request is just to, we got guidance from a county plan about where we should be sending this grant for us, so we regretted that because what it originally was.
I'm not sure I'm on the right page.
I'm on the wrong page.
We got one of 16, which is the 141, $74,000 move.
That's last month. Would you like me to have copies run off for you? I can read off what they are, then I'll have a copy made for each of you before we leave. Okay, two of seven is just miscellaneous state grants. And that is the Safe Schools Grant, the Store 22 Grant, and that grant is the Safe Oilboy Response Grant, that is to prevent opioid use. And then the CSH Grant, which is our coordinated school health grant, and that's just to enter these three grants into our ER 122 budget. And then pages three through six are the school federal fund. On the top of page three is Sub项201, which is Title 2A, and it's just to transfer money within the necessary lines of the budget. And then on the bottom of that page is Sub项401, which is Title 4, and that is simply to correct the rounding entry that happens when we upload our budget into local government. Local government rounds all dollars at each point of investment, so we have to make those match. So, that's the same one also on the next page, just at the end of Sub项7501 and Sub项801, they're all so just rounding entries to get a plan matched up with local government. Page five, at the top of the page is the RIBEA Part B Grant, which is the American Rescue Plan, and it's the money that was provided for special aid, and that is just to budget that money into our ER 122 budget. On the bottom of page five is the ELC Grant, and we are just adding employee benefits, which we all voted on that grant last month in the budget amendment. This is very much just a few lines that have been left out, so we're adding those in for this year. And then on page six and seven is the Literacy Network Grant, and this is just a budget in the Literacy Network Grant, which is, that's really the top spot for our first, and that was another grant we acquired this year. The bottom of the page is the Literacy Training Staffing Grant, and that's the budget that ran into the ER 122 budget. And the final page is Sub项143, which is the Central Cafeteria, and we're just moving lines around to make budget needs and other lines in that particular. And I apologize for not having copies, but I will go with you somewhere off, and I'll have them to you before you leave the meeting. Thank you all.
Number seven. Discuss TSB A regimented changes to board office and youth approval on second meeting at this meeting as follows. 1.8011 emergency closings, 2.806A inter-plantations, 3.205 security, 3.211 youth project planning, 4.204 summer instructional programs, 4.205 in all of the advanced courses, 4.203 family life education and new policy, 4.301 entrance scholastic athletics, 4.605 graduation requirements, 4.700 testing programs, 5.106 application and employment, 5.802 qualifications and uses in graduate schools, 5.117 teacher tenure, 5.200 separation practices for tenured teachers, 5.201 separation practice for non-tenured teachers, 6.200Z, 6.20A attendance, 6.202 homeschooling, 6.319 alternative education, 6.402 discipline examinations and immunizations, 6.300 code conduct, 6.306 interference and disruption of school activities, 6.4081 safe relocation of students, 4.206 homebound instruction, 4.212 virtual education program and new policy. Dr. Menzey.
Okay, gentlemen, these are the signed policies that are brought back to you for approval on the second reading. You approved them last month on first reading, it forces new policies. But new policies, like policy updates, require two readings, approval twice before looking at the current policy. Can you have any questions over the last one?
Number eight, discuss HESR, Dr. Carter.
The only update is that we did receive our revisions yesterday. One mistake is asking us to follow Mr. 3.0, and we are working to make those revisions, but they were slight, and we were pleased. So, hopefully by this time tomorrow, we'll have the revisions sent back into the state.
Number nine, discuss UCTS, safe return to persons in instructional services, Ryan Josh Williams.
Actually, this is not Josh, it's me, and that's the plan I went over with you all earlier, how we're going to come back after this closure.
There is nothing that's changed off of this.
No, there's no change in the original return schedule. More so about our procedures and how we're going to ensure that we get any information out quicker and not of grammar nurses at our schools.
I do have a question there that stems back to your announcements from earlier in that poll that you took and the feedback, you know, and it sounded like we got about 50% participation or response, but of that 50%, 16% plus or minus was in support of masks. How effective do you think it would be if we took a stance and asked our principals and teachers to take a similar stance that masks are not required, but they are highly encouraged and supported? Do you think that would lessen or ease the potential?
That's what we have done with our schools, our policy states that we are, cannot mandate masks for staff or students. So, I've asked and recommended that our staff are in support of some of the students who don't feel supported wearing a mask, that they would feel somewhat supported, but that in no way implies that our staff are required to wear them.
Yeah, I mean, I know I've received inquiries, a lot of feedback this week directly, you know, some from staff who's for, some who's against the mask, lots of parents who are for, lots who are against. And I agree with what you said earlier, there seems to not be an easy solution, but I just wondered if we instilled a culture or a, you know, a mindset going forward that masks are highly recommended and supported, and we had those teachers who do support it, that they, you know, lead by example, if it would help the students feel more comfortable.
And that's the direction we're going in, and I'm hopeful that our students feel comfortable and safe in school regardless. Now, one thing I will say, and I'm very pleased about, is that during the time we have been open, there hasn't been any of what we would say mask shaming on any court. So, I think it would just make our students feel more comfortable if they saw a staff in it. Obviously, remember, we're lying, and there's no consequence for anyone who isn't wearing a mask.
Number 10, discuss the employee code contact, Dr. Carter.
This is the code contact that we approved last year. This applies into our baseline program, and it comes in to basically what is acceptable for teachers, on the license, report work on time, prepare and perform your assigned duties as required, apply with reasonable directness issued, have I established lawful authority, identify, report, control possible unsafe conditions, demonstrate respect and integrity, interacting with students, family, staff, community, university, and other stakeholders, comply with federal laws, state statutes, contractual obligations, communicate in a truthful and timely manner, you may establish some of the authority, authorized supervisory authority within the chain of command, require, use, maintain, and dispose of the school system as set in a responsible manner, maintain confidentiality of information, report actions that may represent violations of federal law, refrain from contact that interferes with one's professional ability to affect the liberty of the people, one's professional duty, and the fact comply with other federal laws, state statutes, or policy and related administrative procedures. So, this is just a reapproval of what we approved last year as a code contact for our teachers.
Number 11, discuss construction administration codes.
Hi, Dr. Lee, Michael Seer. What he was going to discuss though is in this packet, if you all have that, I guess it's Paul Solomon from the book, but it's the engineering services for the HBA systems that we're getting here.
Discuss qualifications for all the different services.
And I'm going to ask Marty Gibbs to kind of piggyback him on this. So, as, you know, we are looking at properties and potential properties to build a middle school in which we may be able to use some of our federal funds, some of these HESR funds to build, hopefully knocking the cost down where the community doesn't have to pay a tremendous amount to have a new middle school. Through that process, you have to have people who understand and know, will a building send on this site, and is this, does it have the infrastructure and tag to support a new building? I can't do that. It would take someone with that expertise to do that. So, our request is that we move forward with this and our central finance put out a request for qualifications so that we can begin the process of interviewing and selecting an architect for this so that we can make a, an informed decision on the purchase of property. Marty, can you add to that any at all?
Be glad to answer questions. I guess the only thing I would add is that I support at the juncture we're in now, you know, with plans to hopefully move forward with the further planning of a new middle school that we do solicit, and try to retain the service of the most qualified architectural firm to help us further assess those properties we're evaluating and start looking at those considerations of a single level versus a multi-level, depending on how the size of the property or how the topography lays. I think there would be value there and it would be minimal expense in the big picture of doing what's best for that planning and selecting the right property and the right application.
Also, I'd like to establish a committee made up of four members, members of the staff at the middle school in the selection process, county commission, the mayor, both of the stakeholders. If, I believe that this will be at the next board, board meeting, I don't think that we will get through the request for qualifications in that entire process before we get to the next board meeting, but we will be somewhere in that area. So, I would like to put together a committee that we can sit down outside of a normal board meeting but open to the public to look at these proposals. And obviously, I would like Marty Gibbs to be a member of that committee. This is an area of his expertise.
Yeah, state law prescribes an alternative approach for hiring professional services beyond just a low bid proposal, so it's titled a request for qualifications because you're doing just that, you're entertaining their experience, their personnel, the team that they propose to be a part of our project and help us lead our project. So, it's qualifications-based submittal and review, and then there are rates and fees that generally follow state fee guidelines, plus or minus, that, you know, get negotiated after you determine who you believe the best firm is that's most qualified to help us.
And we have had some architects come out to just evaluate what properties we've handled that, and they are putting something together just to show us what the potential would be. I've been, and I've had the conversation with Marty, that we're at a place where we need to move forward with this, and the only way to know if a piece of property would be viable for the project is to have a firm in place to make that, to make, help make that determination.
Then number one, discuss revision of the 21.22, so we'll count it, Dr. Carter.
Okay, as I stated before, we would like to go on moving the professional development from April, I think the 18th of 2022, move that as an instructional day rather than professional development day, understanding that that professional development day is one of the three that we've been in place for implement weather. one of the three that we've been in place for implement weather. We've actually completed place 13, we've been in 10, and three professional development days, so we would move that one from professional development to implement weather. So that's, that request.
This is September, and every September you elect a chairman and a vice chairman, it's not actually on the leading agenda, so I need you when you approve the agenda, to approve it as amended, to add an item to A, to elect a chairman, and an item to B, to elect a vice chairman. And also, Mr. U.T.R. question.
About that, I haven't got that.
And she walked around and gave me the current budget amendments. That's what should be open now, not what was on the government, how it applies to that stage.
Just a brief question, I want to go back to the policies and ask you to help me, or all of you to help me on 6.402. Physical examination, immunizations. On the first page of that, lines 21, 22, I'm not crystal clear that I fully understand, but it's talking about the requirement of immunizations unless certain exceptions apply. And then out of number one there on line 21 offers an exception, but seems to further exempt it from epidemic or the COVID-19 pandemic. I wanted to make sure we were all understanding the state's recommendation there.
Well, I understand that that recommendation is that we do not list that as one of the required vaccinations. For example, when we, when students come into kindergarten, there's a list of vaccinations. Also, whenever they live up to seventh grade, I think sixth or seventh grade, they update their vaccines, and I think they're exempting in this that COVID-19 vaccines are not a part of that vaccination regimen.
I'm reading it right the opposite, is it just like a double, it's further exempting that the commissioner of health can mandate.
Okay, now where do you read the first? I've got you on the second, negative associated, tell me here where that first reads, that you think.
Line 19 says, "exceptions will be granted." Blah, 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 and then line 21 says, "His or her religious tendencies and practices, if in the absence of an epidemic or median threat of an epidemic, except in the event of a COVID-19 or any variant outbreak." I mean, I think it's actually reading opposite of what you would first think it says.
Well, it's saying an exception and an except in an exception.
It's very wordy and I don't know that I clearly understand it.
So I read it, I read it, we can clarify and change or add wording where it better defines for us what that means. As I read it, that you have your standard vaccination, when you come to school, you can get an exception to those for religious purposes. And they say other things, except for COVID-19.
As I read this policy, it says that we could require the COVID-19 vaccination even against religious tendencies. And I would like to get that clarified, if we can wait on that policy.
Okay, because that wasn't in 10, I don't think, and when we did first reading, that wasn't the way I was reading it.
Me neither.
But the problem is, is when you say except for, and then you put an exception in your exception, it does make it.
You agree with what I'm reading about?
Yes, I see how that could be misleading. I've never seen.
I think it's given the state more authority intentionally or unintentionally than we're thinking it gives them to.
Right, so, you know, we can.
The state and the board.
The intention was, and when I read it first time, was this was an exception within an exception. So I can, I see what you're saying, it doesn't really make it clear. It could have been from an English major, it would have probably been written more clearly.
And you'll notice that's the only, they changed, they added the word immediate up in line 12, which is a different matter, but that's the only change, they made in that entire policy, other than that is the original policy we've already got.
Right.
It may be reading different than the intent behind it.
And we don't care to get clarification from P S B A who puts these policies out before us, so we can make an exception of that one, just until we get clarification.
Thank you.
So you are okay with us reading all the other policies except that 6.42, any clarification on it, bring anything personal, any of the rest of you, any questions on that?
I appreciate your attention, Matt, because the first time I read it, I really didn't read it beyond that. That's the way I read it, is you can do these with the exception of religious and can't require the others.
And line out of 21 and 22 really says it twice. 21 says, "If in the absence of."
Yeah.
And 22 says, "Except in the event of."
We'll be happy to get that clarified, or at least written in a manner in which we could clearly read and understand it.
We have four ladies that have requested permission to speak, and let me read you out of our board policy what it says about those of the third and fourth board. Individuals speaking to the board shall address remarks to the chair, that's Mr. Koppin, and lay their questions to individual board members or staff members only upon approval of the chair. Each person speaking shall state his name, address, and subject of presentation. Remarks will be limited to five minutes per person unless time is extended by the board. The chair shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. Ladies, we are thrilled to have you, we welcome you. I'll call you up in the order in which you signed my form that said that you were requesting permission to address the board personally now, Jessica.
No problems, my name is Jessica, my address is 115 Old Valley Road. The subject is the manner that I'm speaking on, in general. First off, Mr. Gibbs. Can I address Mr. Gibbs? Can I address Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Gibbs, so one point that I do, I would like for you all to look into for more clarification as Dr. Carter has said that he is going to provide, is on the immunizations. It says, "An exception, except in the event of COVID-19 or any variant outbreak." Is that a requirement, is that a requirement by the P S B A or is that a recommendation?
I think it's generally a recommendation.
That we add that language?
I think it's generally a recommendation.
So it's a recommendation? So it's not something that we have to adopt? It is up to each one of you all to adopt that policy or not, correct?
Note five there does reference a new, possibly a new TCA, C code annotated, so I'd need to research and see if that's state law.
Okay.
If it's required or.
But I believe in the state of Tennessee that religious intentions are allowed. And if this is only a recommendation in the event of COVID, I ask that each of you, I ask that each of you leave that rubber jacket. It is, it is every parent's choice what we do with our children, whether that be COVID vaccinations, whether that be masks wearing at home, in school, in public. We ask that you leave that choice up to us. Do not take that guy away from us. If God entrusted us with this, we ask that you all do the same, okay? It's government overreach, period. No matter how you break it, it's government overreach. We ask that you leave these choices up to us, okay? I'll move on. If, if you cannot mandate a mask, if you cannot issue a mask mandate in your school, you know, my question is, why was there a phone call? Because you wanted to provide a critical link, how the community feels. My concern is, you have teachers in these classrooms that are, that were, they were hired to teach, am I correct, am I wrong on that assumption? They were hired to teach our children. They were not hired to lecture my child or anybody else's child on getting a vaccine or that they should be wearing masks. Our children are getting lectured in our classrooms, okay? Whether you are aware of that or not, or whether you have the knowledge in terms of life and turning your blood up, our children are being lectured, they're not being taught, okay? They're being lectured on, they're selfish for not getting the vaccine. They're selfish and they're not being considered a fellow classmate because they're not wearing a mask in school. I have a friend that dropped her kid off, they don't do masks, but she picked her kid up the same day, wearing a mask, and she asked why, her kid hugged her hand. That tells me something is wrong in the classroom setting. What does it solve? Our teachers were hired to teach, they need to teach. Let us care for our children at home, whether that be masks, whether that be vaccines, or anything else. It's simple as jumping on a treadmill or swimming. If that's what we choose for our children, let us have that option. Our teachers need to teach, they are stressed out, our custodial staff is stressed out, our nurses are stressed out. But yes, what are we doing? We're taking a poll on mask mandates, where they cannot be, they cannot, we're taking a poll on mask preference, where they can't be made at a, on the local level. I feel like that would somewhat waste our resources. I feel like that would somewhat of a waste when you're applying principles with the poet In Good. If I'm the Satan, our public input is why these seven gentlemen are sitting here now. Why don't we allow them to bring our concerns to the board and let the school board vote on the mask mandate? I know you have your voice in the same, absolutely, but they can do that just as well. Why can't they have, why can't they be our voices? We're the ones that put them there, we want them to be our voices. You have teachers that are in retaliation against, because they are choosing not to wear masks in the classroom, because they are choosing not to get the COVID vaccine. They're being retaliating against. Again, whether you are aware of the situation or whether you do know and you're turning your blood up, it falls on each and every one of you.
Can you go with that, about retaliation, do you give?
Uh, no, I cannot be too specific, simply because, simply because of fear of retaliation.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Rachel, and I'm not a hundred percent sure how to pronounce her last name, but it's Manja.
My name's Rachel Manja, my address is 128 Lane, St. Peter's. I have two children, they grew in elementary school here in Union County. I just want to touch on that I do not support masks being worn in school, as I see everybody cares, but they're basically, I want our children to have the freedom. Cloth masks are not effective, there's a study among healthcare workers, and it was found that moisture retention, reusing a cloth mask, and floor filtration can result in an increased risk of infection. So we're trying to keep our children healthy, keeping masks on them, that they are touching constantly and contaminating is not going to do that. This study was with healthcare workers who are the best at wearing personal protection and wearing masks, children are not. I also believe that a contact tracing is not effective, it's a waste of our resources here, and our children are unlikely to contract and spread COVID-19, and I think that our focus should be on education. And the last thing that I want to talk about is the COVID vaccine, this is something that each parent and each family should have the rights inside, I don't think that it should be posted on Facebook, somebody's opinion that it's going to help, this is something that people need to research and do on their own without being on Facebook, coming from schools or the board or anything like that. I think our children deserve a good year, they deserve freedom, and I don't see masks and vaccines helping that, it's a personal decision, I have no problem with anybody wearing a mask or getting a vaccine, but I don't think that it should be anybody's decision. Thank you for your time, and thank you for being there for our children.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Michelle White.
Well, I'm probably the most nervous person in the city, I'm not, I mean, I'm just in my mind, I'm here to just, you know, spend it for the kids. Most of us all know each other here, you know, or somebody's family, or, you know, we all know each other. You know, I rushed my kids back here, and I had to, you know, remember for us, we have my husband's job, so we have to start school anywhere else but here, because you just don't want to leave your kids with anybody that you don't know. You know, you're just going to work your way to a stay at home. So I feel like nobody here wants anything but what's best for the kids. And I'll say Marty returned to my call for my concerns, and, you know, he told me, well, most of you wouldn't agree with me, and that's okay. That's why I gave each and every one of you a packet, you can take home and research, but sleep through that, I spent hours and hours, and I didn't sleep, and I stayed up and I just put that together for all of you to consider, because I feel like there's lots of things not being considered separate, and I tried to use sources that you guys trust, the CDC, the FDA, which is the letter of approval, and the reissues of the E U A for the COVID vaccine, it's in there, and I've highlighted it, because I spent all the time that I did going through that, and it's specifically stated in there, it is not everything, it is not safe. The fair chart is in there from the CDC saying, you know, only one to five percent of adverse action in the Fed and the F are reported, so what you see there is only a smidgen of the reality. And it is said, more than 30 years of all other vaccines combined, that is from the CDC, it is specifically stated that that is just reissues of a prior order of the E U A, and it's redacted like crazy because it's from the government, and that's what the government does, and I feel like we should not be trusting the government to make these decisions. They are censoring us, everybody knows we're fact-checked, everybody's fact-checked, yes. And, you know, this is something that is a decision for our children, we should do more research on it, nobody should be recommending a vaccine, encouraging it, because nobody here is a doctor, including myself, but I am a parent, sometimes, I mean, all but our parents know better than the doctors. And I feel like you should be encouraging parents instead, don't ask me if I'm going to say, go do your research, go to your field of attention, talk to your doctor, and do the research, not just talk to your doctor. There's so much evidence out there, it's scary. Everybody says they don't have blood on their hands, that vaccine, good blood on your hands, even if you yourself have had it, that's your free choice, and you didn't have any reactions, that doesn't mean the next person will, you know, me and you still won't. And I want that for anybody. Anybody's kids, I'm here for my kids, your kids, everybody's kids. And I'm saving a mom and a son nothing, but tirelessly researching stuff, and I'm, I'm placed above the borders, I'm safe, I kept my parents, my grandparents, my kids, I made my daughter quit work in Good City, we locked our bedrooms, now we did that for none. And then we realized, this is not worth wasting our lives for, and teaching our kids to be right to leave the house, because they might catch, they will catch up to that. My kids are getting sick already, you know, I've known people close to me that have had coronavirus and, you know, really badly infected by, it's not, it's a little virus, and it's, you know, the weirdest fear, nobody needs to know about that. Where do they go? I found it. It's right there in everyone in your packet, it says, it is now listed, everybody knows who a comorbidity is, it's listed now, on 95% of COVID, I'm sorry, 46% of deaths of this corona has a cause of death, the flu is listed on those as a comorbidity, a comorbidity, that's where the flu went, it accounts for 300,000 deaths that were reported as corona, not the flu, because they don't know, because the test don't know. The FDA has said that, all of that is in your packets, it's all in there, FDA said, our test didn't know, Delta, Randa, whatever you want to call it, that, there's COVID-19, Delta and Randa and whatever they want to say, we're just trying to fear monger everybody, including our kids, and you guys, you know, I appreciate all of you giving any of us opportunity to speak, and this is not a lecture. And this, this is not a lecture. This is just me begging you to please consider looking at alternate sources and giving the parents a choice. Just go back to school. If you want a mask, wear it. If you don't, don't. I've always told my kids, you're not being mean to anybody. So, you know, that's their talk, not to shame anybody in the world. So, you know, I mean, just consider what other parents think and please be considerate and read what I've put together for you and just, you know, consider that other parents might not feel the same way. You should all just respect each other's choices, no matter which side you're on.
Dr. Mincy, if you, Dr. Mincy, if you would mind, I'd like to just add a little context. Uh, Michelle and I had a good conversation that was very friendly. We had some healthy opinions we shared between each other openly and it was never my intent to disagree on behalf of the board with any of her viewpoints. We were talking, I think specifically about the federal government's reach and, you know, I think Michelle was encouraging this board, uh, to branch out, take a path and charter and go against potentially some of those federal and possibly even state recommendations.
You're not lost.
And I told Michelle that as a board, I suspect we would have a hard time getting adequate support to go set, go down such a path. I hope that day does not come in the future. I personally don't think this thing's going away soon, but I told her this month it would probably be a nutshell climb to get a public body to take the hard lines. We had a great conversation there.
I didn't vote for you, disagree with the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And this is regarding your, 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 your.
My name's Renee. I have two daughters. I got one in elementary school this year. Um, they don't wear masks. I don't really wear masks. We don't wear masks. It's just the way it is. Do you feel that kids need a mask? That those kids wear a mask? It's a personal choice. Teachers are supposed to be teaching our kids not worrying about, do they have masks? Are they in the mask company? Our kids are suffering. Their education is suffering right now. Like, they, my kids personally failed math last year alone, just math. Their other grades wasn't that great either. They need an education. There's other sicknesses going around. There always is. My kids will get struck before they will get anything else. That's just the way it is. We don't make them wear masks when they're struck season or flu season. They're free. They've got a smart job. Kids do. Let them go to school. Let them get that education so they can be adults and succeed and provide for their family that they have one day. They hold them back and worrying about this disease of this segments. And let them be kids. Let them have their sports. Let them play. Let them be kids. Let them have that education without worrying about masks. It's a virtual world. Go and wear it, go and wear it. We don't, we don't. It's the way it is. No virtual learning, because that doesn't work. Because we're in a community where half of us can't either. There's kids that can't afford internet. They don't have a device at home. Or they do, or they cannot get internet because there's not any providers that can provide that. So, virtual learning is a real option. They need to be in a school building, like, they need that education.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate these parents coming and speaking to us and if you would support it, I would support offering, uh, Jessica two more minutes to come offer any closing. Of course, we got one more.
This is my first meeting I've been to and I'm fairly new and I have five, my six children ago. So, is there, who would I, how do I sign up to speak, uh, just a few minutes? How would, how would I do that for this, for this meeting? I don't mean to interrupt, I just, I just wanted to ask that.
The chairman has to agree to it and he did. Sorry, you probably didn't hear that.
Okay, no, it's all right. So, yeah, whenever, whenever you're ready, I would just like to say a couple things.
We're ready right now.
All right, my name is Dennis Furman. I'm relatively new, uh, to Union County. My address is 198, by that circle. Five of my six children now stay in county schools, rank from a seven, four-year-old twins up to a seventeen-year-old. I think it's important that everybody respects other opinions of everyone else. I believe it's also important that everyone, uh, does their own research, as we've said multiple times as well, as part of a republic, as part of America, as part of the liberty that we have doing this. But I think it also all boils down to that thing. We had thirteen people who just perished in another country, right for the liberty, to make choices, or God given, or God given. This country is the only, one of the only countries in the world who stand up for the liberty for people to make their own choices, to make bad choices every day. That's their choice. People make good choices. Sometimes they affect other people. That's part of being a human being and being on this world. But it's also why we have a legal system, that when you make bad choices affect other people, you have to pay for those. But I think it all boils down, we should all remember the sacrifices. I had several of my close friends who gave their lives for liberty. I've also shed my blood for that liberty. And I think if we go down the road of forcing people to do things against their will, we're leaving American values, we're leaving the Constitution. That's ultimately all we must abide by. We start heading towards having, nope, most of you gentlemen here are old enough to know or at least the history of Germany, and other countries, Russia, and Mali. Mali's a tough, we, you gentlemen are old enough to know the history of that. We don't, we've gone in our country in the past forty years, we've gone way left, way left. The right's no longer right, it's middle. The left's no longer on the middle. We're drifting. We're drifting because we've lost our core and that's it. I think we all need to remember that and I thank you gentlemen for your attention. Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, if I could order, if I could start here. Uh, oh, sorry. Have a couple extra. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Griffin.
I just ask if we would consider granting her two more minutes for any final thoughts or closing statements.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and I'll go back to Mr. Griffin. Um, there are teachers being retaliated against for those that choose not to, um, wear the mask, that choose not to push the mask on our children, that choose not to take this experimental vaccine. They're being retaliated against.
Can you give, can you give names? Can you give names of who?
Absolutely not. That's, that's, that's something they trusted me with and I would not, I would, I would throw them in the bus if I had to. Absolutely not. Because then that puts a target on our back. That might be something vulnerable. That's how, that's how the teachers feel. They're afraid to speak out against names because they feel like they'll have a target on their back. That should say something online and it says whether you have names or not, that should speak volumes to you, okay? If you've hired these individuals to be done, then you do it wrong without fear of retaliation and let them choose what's best for them, whether it be her, whether it be me. I should have the freedom to be able to speak out against names, but I don't agree with them, but they don't, okay? They're being retaliated against. It's my understanding that if you are vaccinated and you're quarantined, then you get to use your sick days. If you're not vaccinated and you're quarantined, you have to use your vacation days. That is retaliation because it appears to me that if we're not knowing the personal agenda from, whether it be your local teachers or the principal of the school or anyone else in higher quarantine, that they can pick and choose what vacation or sick days you're able to utilize in such events. That's nonsense. That is by, that is by definition discrimination. And that's all I, I cannot say. I can't mention names of you. If you were in my position, I don't think you would be the same. I'm trying to help our children. I'm trying to help our teachers. To be treated fairly. You want to do this poll to give the principals more information on what the community wants? Stop. Let the principals do their jobs, stop providing more information, just like a child that wants to wear a mask, they come home with a mask. That's no beliefs. That's too much. When does it stop? When does it stop? A lot has to be drawn at some point. If a child needs help, they should, hey, I don't understand this math problem, can you help me? Send them to wear the mask. If they are, if they're afraid they're not wearing it, hey, Mr. Moore, can you help me use my mask? I can't do it. If they don't have the trust to ask for a help with a math problem, then they don't have the trust to ask for help with a mask. It needs to stop. Thank you.
I call this thing to order. Uh, as stated earlier, it is September and this is the time in which we elect the chairman for our board. Uh, before we do that, I want to clear up a couple of things. Hey, I did say now that, uh, a message to the principal staff, we are not mask police. I did not want anybody, this is before the school year started, so no one's supposed to be looking for masks, unmasking if, uh, teachers don't receive vacation days. Uh, they are allowed to have, use their sick days if they are quarantined. But I will look into any, because that was explicitly stated that masks are not the purpose of us being in school. I don't have the authority to mandate a mask. I think that's a misconception out there that anybody that I'm just going to mandate masks and I don't. And to Jessica, I apologize for, uh, if that poll affected anyone, that was not intended. Uh, so, I'll take nominations. I just, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot those. Uh, do I have a, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Absolutely.
As second.
Second.
As amended. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, aye. Next, nominations for chairman of Union County Board of Education. Do I have any nominations? I have a nomination second for Mr. Copping. Are there any other nominations for chairman of the board? Any other nominations? Is there a motion that we, uh, approve the topic by a nomination?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Mr. Copping, you're the chairman. I appreciate being relieved of that, because I have two.
Second. Case the nomination. Second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Uh, you have a nomination. Through the ballot. Second. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead. Those who care. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. Any opposed, though? Motion carried. Number four, is there a motion to approve the budget meeting? Motion approved. Motion is there, second. Second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. No opposed. Uh, Mr. Copping. Mr. Copping, call. Is it four? Is it three? Four? Four? Three? Four? And is it second? Motion carried. Number five, is there a motion to approve the two contracts, the solutions of sentence expulsion? A motion? Got a motion, second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. No opposed. There is a six. All of these, uh, pieces of parts will be there.
Make a motion, we approve the listed.
For approve them all, but six, one, four, zero, two.
I make that motion, we approve, except for six, four, two.
Okay. Second. All right, got a motion, second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. Carry. Number seven, is there a motion to approve the flowing contract? Motion. There is a six. Second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. No opposed. Motion carried. Number eight.
Yes, I, I, it was about the, uh, proposals with HPA systems, which are inside.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved. Second. All in favor of say aye. Aye. No opposed. Motion carried. I'm going to go to the end. Is there a motion of limited vacation of twenty-one, twenty-two thousand? Motion. Second.
Just a quick clarification, that's to make April eighteen a regular instruction day?
It would be an instructional day, rather than a professional day.
Eighteen.
Yeah, I probably haven't heard you yet. Motion second.
All in favor of say aye. Any opposed, though? No.
Okay, question. The second Thursday, October fourteenth, which is the middle of February, would you all check a little bit weekly on the seventh? And I'll tell you one reason we need to, the consolidated application of federal funds of budget carryover is due to be national by the fifteenth, but it has to be approved by the board before the director can sign off on it. So, we met on the seventh, we will meet at that line. Is that okay?
Yes.
May I have one last comment before we get there? Dr. Carter, if, uh, you see fit, uh, going back to the, uh, some of the comments made about the teachers. I guess I would encourage you to talk to our education association. That has been a traditional voice of the teacher. I don't know if some teachers feel more or less comfortable using that outlet, but, you know, we certainly recognize that on every agenda and that seems like a phenomenal place for the teachers to have a voice. I think that's the whole purpose of their association. So, perhaps they want to engage in some of these controversies we're in the midst of.
I'll be happy to reject it, the association and, um, and happy for any teacher to come to me and say, hey, this is going on in my school because I have put out explicit rules about the behaviors that, how the professor says about this. So, yes, I will use the association to be the voice and they can bring those concerns to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you remember a few years ago, Mr. Carter, playing about that some of our science books, that someday man would walk on a hill. He would walk on a hill.
We got the goods.
We got the goods. However, use an example where initially I walked on a hill, it's a different stuff. These people that come back from far back, they're trying to erase, you know, their history, so they're moving, they're old looks.
That's your idea.
They're free to make the difference. I might make, is there a motion, your chairman? Second. Thank you.